Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to tonight's town council meeting. First item of my business is the approval of the minutes from the December thirteenth council meeting. The last time we met, does anybody have any questions, corrections? Not, alright, if not, we'll print those minutes that submitted. Next item, reporting to town manager, Mr. Warner.
Thank you Mayor Black, members of council. I want to begin with a sad report that of the passing of two former employees from our public works department, Mr. John Hensley and Mr. Bobby Mitchum, who were kind of legendary figures back in the day and performed tremendous service to the community and just ask that you remember their families at this time during that loss. DW Lawhorn has provided some data related to our solid waste service provision during 2022 that you might find interesting. Last year, we collected over 1,000 tons of brush that compares to 900 tons the year before. We collected 194 tons of leaves, that's up from 169 tons. And we also collected 37 tons of tires, which compares to the 26th the year before. So we continue to see robust usage of our solid waste operation and hopefully our citizens, both current and new, will appreciate that. On an administrative note, I wanted to remind you all that your economic and conflict of interest forms are due back to Deborah by the 23rd of this month. If you have not already submitted those, please do so promptly. And town offices will be closed on Monday, January 16th in observance of the federal holiday honoring the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And that concludes my report.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Warner?
I did see bulldozers now the pulpings operating a week, that's ago and in progress.
Yes, the demolition activity in advance of the redevelopment is underway.
Good deal. And the chamber, is that pretty much moving forward?
Yes, and I need to go by and speak to the new executive director. But my understanding is their board has agreed to the latest documents we've sent them. They just need to take action in a meeting and get that back to us. That is my understanding. From the previous director.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Warner? No? Alright, appearances before council. We've got four people signed up to speak tonight. And I'll just call them, call you in order here. Mary Jo Boone, and then Erica McFadden, and then Jeremy Rowlett and Crystal Johnson.
Hi there. I own a business on 126 South Ridge Street, The Well, and it backs up to the farmer's market. About a year ago, we put in a really nice back deck on The Well and I put a really cute bench out there. And my husband said to me, "Mary Jo, you shouldn't do that because you're just gonna get the winos and the people up here smoking cigarette butts and leaving them." And I said, "Well, two weeks ago, we had beer cans and trash and cigarette butts up on our deck, just left there." And then we also had a report that someone had gone and opened our, on Washington Street, we have like cellar doors. And then there's another cellar door under that that's locked from the inside. But they were, they opened that to see, I guess, if they could get in. And the cigarette butts and beer cans and trash has been several nights in a row. I did contact the police and let them know and asked them if they could just drive by on a regular basis at night because we don't know what's going on. And then on the stairs on the back, I put garland for the holidays with lights. And you know, when you attach the light, there's like a light outlet open, right? And so it's up on our deck. And I guess if the town had cut off the power to the farmer's market, they were coming over and plugging their cell phones in to our lights there. And they would do that all day or all night, like we'd see them out there. And then they just hang out there, which, you know, deterred, potentially deterred people from coming in. So I don't have a solution, I don't know what it is, but it's, we've been there two and a half years and I, this is the first time that we've had to deal with this. And so now we're having to put cameras up. I don't know, it's just, it's something we need to deal with. And we're, The Well, my husband and I are willing to help in whatever way that looks like. You know, I don't necessarily, we had to put a sign, you know, when we go down the steps now, we have a chain and a sign that says no trespassing, which I hate doing that, but you know, we had to put that up because if they do trespass and the police come, they can arrest them, not that I want that to happen. We just need to figure something out. And we're on the team to help with that, don't have a solution at all, but we need to do something. It is affecting our store that is right there where they're hanging out. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McFadden?
Good evening, council members. America McFadden, I run Farmer's Market and the market manager. And I'm here to basically talk about the same thing that Mary Jo was here to talk about. I've had several phone calls over the past couple of days about the trans, the transy folks that are hanging out under the pavilion and that they are causing some problems. There is some trash we always have to sweep up before Farmer's Market. We're getting ready to have our monthly markets. And we have a certain atmosphere that we like to upkeep there, which is family friendly, which is safe. And it's becoming not so much. And having worked for nonprofits and the library and other places where there are, there are free areas to go, what tends to happen is people congregate, they tend to build their spaces and they claim their spaces. And you get a lot of problems with that, inviting, sometimes drugs, sometimes, you know, panhandling and whatnot. And we just don't want that for the farmer's market. And like Mary Jo, I don't have a solution. I wish we did have a shelter, I know we do not. I'm on board to help with whatever y'all come up with. But unfortunately, the population that needs shelter under there are starting to cause some problems and it does need to be addressed. It's nice that the town was to cut the breakers so they can't charge their cell phones, but I see they're having some, you know, they're finding other ways to do that. The sides that the town has put up for us, which is really wonderful for the farmer's market in the winter, that's being, those are being taken up and then put back down for the markets. That's kind of a Band-Aid. So it's a temporary solution. So whatever you guys come up with for a long-term solution, I'm happy to help. I'm happy to be there on that team. So I just wanted to let you know what was going on and I really appreciate your attention to the matter that seems to be growing and becoming an unfortunate problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowlett?
Hello. My name is Jeremy. I'm the owner of Rowlett's Auto and Tire, 221 West Washington Street in Beaufort. We've been serving the Beaufort area for almost 17 years now with the automotive business. We've recently moved over four years ago to where we're located now. Continuing to serve Beaufort citizens with car repairs. Kind of pretty much touch bases on the same thing the ladies have said. A little bit more, we're there obviously from eight to five every day, so we get to see a little bit more of it. My biggest concern for me is just, we have physically seen assaults going. I mean, women have been grabbed by the hair, yanked down over there. I'm not gonna say it's every day that this occurs or this happens, but it's becoming too frequent to see it. And I'm not a police officer or anything like that, but there is obviously drug transactions going on over there. It's, they're not hiding it or anything. I mean, they're, they do a little fist thing where it's obviously you're handing somebody something, they're reaching in their pockets and then it's obviously the same thing again. So you know they're taking money and then they're just handing, you know, whatever it is back to them. And the other thing we've observed is open flames over there. I guess they're doing some kind of cooking. I'm not saying cooking up drugs, but there's something, there should be an open flame over there, in my opinion. But, you know, that's a concern to me. The cussing and swearing that we're hearing inside of the office across the street, it's becoming a problem. And how it mean that, you know, we have women and children that come in the office to wait for their repairs and they're saying something to, you know, the front desk at the office. I obviously have come up there and observed it out of the shop. It's very obvious what's coming out of their mouth and it's something that a six-year-old or three-year-old or, no matter how old the child is, whether he's 12, should not be observing that kind of language coming from over there. And, you know, that's, I'd like to, like them, like to get this issue resolved because I do feel that it is reflecting business in some way. I have had one or two comments from customers, you know, is my car safe to leave here? I will be honest, you know, the four years since we've moved to the location, I've only had one issue with money being taken out. And it was the customer, you know, the customer took responsibility that we left the car unlocked at their wheel with the keys in the car where they asked and they had some money in the cup holder and it disappeared. But they did roll the things up today, the plastic things. So let's hope that maybe helps a little. And the last thing, up there, there's, they're writing some gang signs on the clear things that are hanging, like they sweat from the condensation. When you Google, obviously I'm not a gang affiliator, don't know gang signs, but you know, we have Google at our fingertips these days. And if you Google what that, what the signs are, it's below it, whatever that means. So I'm sure it's some kind of gang affiliation of whatever that leads back to, or whatever that means. So, but like, yeah, I just want to see that the issue is resolved. We have a good town here and I'd just like to keep it, keep it clean and keep it safe and for everybody to feel welcome to come into our businesses. And thanks to that, and I appreciate y'all. Anything we can do, we'd be there to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Good afternoon. I'm not a good formal speaker, so I'll rub all mine down in a letter form. My name is Crystal Johnson, I do reside in the town of Beaufort. I work for Jeremy at Rowlett's Automotive at 221 West Washington Street. Over the past six months, more and more people have been congregating across the street at the farmer's market pavilion. In turn, this has caused a significant increase in general disturbances and nuisances in the area. Daily, there are multiple drug deals taking place to which I do have photos that I have taken of cars with buyers and sellers in the pictures. I personally photographed the gang tag that was put on the plastic several weeks back that was mailed to every member of town council and to the mayor and board. I've called the police on several different occasions from Rowlett's for verbal, physical altercations, their cooking, et cetera. And to date, nothing has been done. The last incident involved six to seven people fighting over at the farmer's market, which in turn led to them ending up in front of Fisher's Automotive that afternoon with the gang of people over in that direction. And I know that the shepherd's table had an incident last month involving a gentleman from that group, from the farmer's market, being disorderly and supposedly wielding a machete. We've had multiple customers in our waiting area during some of these ordeal's, some of which, like Jeremy said, are minors. One elderly customer stated that she would not be back as long as the riffraff was across the street as she did not need to hear the filth coming from their mouths. One lady made me walk her to her car during one of the outbursts across the street because she said that all that yelling and cursing has scared her. You all have made it way too comfortable over there. They're taking it as a shelter, which the plastic was rolled up today. They scattered for an hour, then they congregated back a little bit, then they left their belongings and took off. And then, you know, they were back in and out all day this afternoon. You know, picnic tables have been doubling as beds over there. You know, there needs to be no laudering signs put up. I think that will help. And then I think that the town needs to enforce the codes that they're violating, which are four in particular codes. You know, because they do carry misdemeanor charges and I don't know if that's, you know, a police thing or council thing. But, you know, and I have no problem with homeless people whatsoever. My husband was homeless when I met him. You know, and it's not, it's, the issue I have is a lack of respect that's being shown to the town, to the community, to taxpaying businesses, to, you know, the community in general. You know, it's being disrespected and, you know, something needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out and bringing this matter to our attention. Appreciate it. Alright, next item is council comments. So we'll start with Mr. Carson.
Mr. Mayor, I, I was just, I'm still listening to what they were talking about. Resonating because most of, I want to, first of all, a lot of those people that are there, they are not homeless people. They're there. I'm very sorry for what you're going through. But I feel like I can say this because I know most of those people. I know them, I know their family. And the ones that's doing stuff that you're saying, I can, I can almost tell you who's doing what. They have been there a long time. Not all of them, not that many, but it's been people congregating there, they sit there. But we got a lot of things going on in that little area. A lot of them are coming there because they want to go into Christian ministries. So they come and they wait, they gather there, they wait to go into Christian ministries, to be the first to go into Christian ministries. And they're waiting on the shepherd's table. Some of them, it has become a daily thing to get there. Sometimes when I go and work in the morning, five thirty, six, there's people there. And I know they didn't sleep there all night long, but they are there. There's also a woman shelter opening up on Simms Street. I don't know if they've opened it yet, but if they have, these people that utilize that, they have to get out at about six o'clock in the morning. Where do you think they're going? They're going to Farmer's Market because they know it's gonna be food in a little while. And if Christian ministries are open that day, you're gonna see more there in Christian ministry. You shouldn't have to go through this, that's true. But I think I can honestly say the police is doing everything they can without seeming like bullies. I put it like that. They're doing what they can do to go, they're not breaking laws if they're just sitting there and by the time they get there, they don't see them break laws. They have to be, go on your word. We talked about that farmer's market before, even before you came forward. We've had a conversation about the farmer's market. And yes, something needs to be done there. But I hope you don't feel like that it's just being ignored. I hope you don't feel like that some of these people that are there, it doesn't, it's not all these people. You got a few of them that's doing this, and I can just about tell you, they're out. You have a few of them, yeah, you have a few of them that's doing this, the same ones all the time. But some of them are actually there just to wait. You know, they're there for that. They're not there all night long. Still, that doesn't excuse the fact that they're disrupting your business. But I assure you, the police is, they're doing what they can. They have a lot they have to do, so it's not like they can constantly be in there. Not only that, but we have to do something as a town. You have these problems, but these are things that we have to sit down and have a long conversation about. This is what we need to do. And the reason I say that is because what we do down there is gonna affect just regular, normal citizens. Because I came through there when you had all these people sitting up here on this end, but you've had a woman and her kids down there reading books. So these are normal people. I've came through there when you had a lot of people that standing in the park and not talking, they're just finished eating at the restaurant. So if we fix it to where nobody goes on that end, we're working with these normal citizens too. So we have to aim it right here at this spot, right there. This is the conversation we have to have. So don't feel like we're gonna ignore this. I don't know about nobody else, but I'm not gonna let it go because we've come too far, we are a good town, we're growing, things are happening in this town. It's gonna benefit everybody. So any little incidents like this, we need to get ahead of. But I assure you, all those people you see there, they're not bad people. But the ones that are bad, yeah, maybe we need to read more. I'd like to assure you that the police are doing what they can do within their limitation without them being banned right there, there. We have to do something. I saw a sign, I was coming, I looked and I said, the only thing here, I said, this is, you got a sign there that say no lauding between 11:00 and 6:00 AM. So that means you can stay there until 11 o'clock. So we have to do better about signs. We have to do that. That gives the police more authority to come in here. They're not gonna just run up because somebody sent me and say, what are you doing? It's 10 o'clock at night, I can sit here if I want because the signs say nothing. So we have to do more to give them more to work. But I just want you to know, we talked about this before. It's not going unnoticed. We're gonna do everything we can to straighten this out. Thank you for coming to Forest.
And it's just new, the past six months for us.
I know.
It must be true.
Yeah, I know, but I promise you, those, a lot of those people, they are not homeless people. Believe me, they are not homeless people. Nobody sleeps there, they have to sleep somewhere. They are not homeless people. They have places that they go, people that they stay with. And then maybe a couple of them there that might be homeless now because I knew a lot of them had rooms at the hotel because people were looking out for them, you know, families was trying to help them out. But families are getting fed up too. They're tired of just, and all of these people that you see there, believe it or not, these people get a check every month. All of these people that you see there, most of them, they get a check every month. So it's gonna be a certain time of month where you're gonna see more activity than a little bit. Why? Because they got money. I'm serious. I know, because it's, it was going on before you were there and there is just escalating. But I know, I know. And I can just imagine the ones that's doing it, I really, you know. And you got normal people that utilize them.
Right, yeah, I know, there's certain people that go over there every, you know, every day when there's the shepherd's table, I mean, it's actually a customer value, you know, so, you know. Yeah, we don't have any problem with anybody being over there, just don't, don't disrupt our business.
No, they shouldn't. Not issue?
I mean, some of them eat and leave, so.
Yeah, I see them eat and leave. I mean, I've seen, like, there in the summer, I'll eat over there, eat their lunch and eat it over there. You know, that's not that we have an issue with, it's just staying up there all day from, you know, we're open from eight to five and then six hours, all those days, you know, or all those hours, they're over there yelling and fighting and, you know, cussing and.
In order to have a beautiful God, you have to get the weeds up. Can we see if we can do it?
I can't add a lot to what Mr. Carson said, but if there's, if there are crimes being committed openly, we need to solve that problem. If there are open air drug transactions, we need to get on that.
Recall him, Mr. Carson, and thank y'all for coming tonight or whatever. So, you know, I've seen a couple of things down there or whatever, myself or whatever, but I'm not, I think we need to have a discussion on that, what direction we need to go in that, if we can add that to the agenda tonight. I mean, like, what direction, what bounds we have or whatever, stuff like that.
I mean, I would like to give our staff, myself, I'd like to give our staff and the police chief. I know they, I know they're aware of it, they're, they're working on some things. I mean, so myself, I would like to maybe give them some time to try to address the issue or maybe come up with some recommendations. I mean, they're the professionals. I mean, this is a very sticky problem. I mean, and it's happening in communities all over the world, other country. I mean, so, and this is probably the first time we've had to have this conversation about this at this level. So, I mean, to me, I know at some level, we need to involve the county. I mean, social services, there needs to be a kind of concerted, concentrated effort to, you know, I don't want to just throw tarts at the problem. I mean, it's bigger than just people hanging out, you know, at the farmer's market and being disruptive. You know, I mean, this community, the town does not really have services, you know, for the people in these types of situations. Yeah, the county, some of my. Yeah, the county, in my, some of my conversations with, with them, probably don't, doesn't have a very high level of it yet at, at this time either. So, um, I mean, we can sit here and spitball kind of things that may, you know, solve a temporary problem, but does it really get to the core issue of what's kind of driving some of this behavior? And it, you know, how do we come up with a little bit longer term solution? I, I mean, we can certainly discuss it further tonight, but that's just my take is, you know, we don't want to just...
Well, only my concern is when you have, like, Mr. Mafadian and stuff, people that rent some market down there, and you have issues going on down there, and the people don't want to leave. I know our police will take care of it if they call them down there, but I just want to make sure that we don't have that problem.
I would say this is more for the January first retreat discussion. To where we get more information from the chief as to what's going on. I mean, this, this is very good, and let me say, I appreciate what you all have said. And, and I, trust me, what you have said will not go unheard, but just be patient. But to discuss it tonight, we're, until we get more information from the chief and other things, I'd be more comfortable possibly waiting until our retreat and discuss it at the end, but...
Because we have been having conversations amongst ourselves, with our staff, with, with the chief, you know, I mean, so that, it's not, it's not under the radar, we're not trying to put it, you know, under the, under the rug or anything, but I think we need to be thoughtful about how we do this, you know. You know, everybody's got rights, you know, so we've got to protect those people's rights just as much as we protect yours' rights as business owners. So, uh, and I'm not a lawyer, not a law enforcement professional, so I don't, I may have an idea that could, that might help, but it could be totally, you know, not what we really want to do to try to solve the problem. I mean, it would, it would probably be very easily to go down there and push them away from the market. You know, but where do they go? You know, do they go to Centertown Park? Do they go to Liberty Lake Park, you know? So, yes, if you see something illegal, you think illegal is going on, call our police department immediately, okay? If, if, if you think there's a crime going on, that's what I suggest at this point in time. And they give us a chance to kind of, uh, you know, think about other items or other ways we can kind of deal with this issue. If, and, and give the, these guys an opportunity to, to work the, work the problem out. I mean, they're aware of it, uh, but there's only so many things we can do. Like Mr. Carson said, we don't want to do one thing that could potentially affect other things. So we got to think through this, and that's just where I am.
Go ahead.
I tend to agree in that they're not all bad, as, uh, Mr. Carson said. So we've got to, as he clearly said, we've got to find out who the weeds are and address those. And I'm sure the chief and his staff will get on that and come up with a solution that we'll talk about, discuss it.
There is one individual, whenever he comes around here, it's, it's, uh, it's like, that's one of the...
He stirs it up, stirs it up.
A lot of them on medication too. And if they're on their meds, you probably can't get two words out of them, but if they're off their meds, and a lot of them have begun to get to a point where they're not taking the meds, they're trying to sell it and do something. But a lot of them that you're talking about, they take medication.
Yeah, I, I know two of them personally.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know a couple of them, probably, you know, like that.
I, I would wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Carson. This is a complex problem that, that's not going to be settled tonight. We, we, we've got to look into it and, and get further information. There are a number of things that are affecting it. The fact that Shepherd's Table does not open their dining anymore. You, you, they give them a box lunch and they take it out. And they have to have someplace, a lot of them go over there to, to eat. Now, is, some of these people, I, I was there just a very short time ago, and I took some pictures and got confronted by one of the fellows, wanted to tell me that I couldn't take his picture. And he told me, he questioned my parenthood, so, you know, and I, and I agree. I, I, we need, we need to figure out how to close this thing down and, and make it best for the, for the merchants. We don't want to drive them away from there. And the Shepherd's Table does a lot of good in this town. We don't want to drive them away from it. So it, it's, it's, it's a little more complex than just saying, we're going to put up a few signs and, and, and have the police visit there, uh, you know, ten times a day. It's, it's, we're going to have to think this thing through, and it's not being ignored. When I got your, a, a letter in the mail about this, I, I went and decided to go look for myself. And like I said, I was confronted by one fella who, who obviously was not happy with me taking pictures. And I can imagine, um, you know, it's, it's not good for anybody to, to be confronted by somebody who did what that gentleman did with me. So I use the term gentleman loosely. That's all I...
Okay, first I want to thank all of you for coming here, speaking with us about your concerns. Now, from what I heard, here are some of my biggest worries is, one, people breaking into businesses that should not be. Two, the drug dealings that you said that you saw going on, those are definitely big worries of mine, big concerns. You know, because here's the thing, that reflects not just on the town, but all of us up here as well and stuff like that's going on because that's going to make us look bad as well. But the other thing is, you know, this is going to be a delicate situation. I mean, how do we go about handling it? What's the root cause? How do we solve that? I mean, it's like Bruce was saying, it's going to be more than just staking up signs and having the police come. And Bob Carson was right, saying, hey, we just need to get rid of the weeds. And I'm pretty sure that, let's, I'm just throwing out loose numbers. For every ten people that's there, there's probably one bad apple. It only takes one bad apple to spoil the bunch. And I don't care where that's at. I mean, you're always going to have, if you get enough people there, one bad apple. And the other thing is, if somebody is a smoker, wouldn't kill them to at least throw away their cigarette butts? I mean, fistfights, all that stuff. I mean, if they're there and they're just having a box lunch or something, fine. But when you're doing things that are disruptive, things that cause harm, things that are legal such as drug dealing, stuff that harms our businesses, harms people, that's where I have an issue with that. And, you know, some of the things that could be done, I mean, I've got a hundred list of ideas, but, you know, I may have to run past Bart and our chief and talk amongst the other council members, see what they say. But, you know, we have to be fair, we have to get rid of the weeds, but we also have to be fair to the ones that aren't causing riffraff either. And that's one of the things we got to do. I also want to thank Terry Owens for what he's doing. He's fixing up some of his buildings downtown. They're looking better what they did. Keep up the great work to the Owens family, thank you. But I think something that could possibly help, and now personally, I've got a couple other jobs I do as well. And, you know, is if we had more affordable housing here, I wonder if that would take care of some of the riffraff? I mean, you never know because that's one of the things that we have to look into as well. But thank you for coming out, and if you have any more concerns, please come back, please let us know. Please email us, text us, whatever. Please keep us in the loop because if we don't know there's a problem going on, how can we fix it? We only can fix a problem if we know about it. And if you see any drug dealing going on or anything like that, please call the police right away. Call them when you see major stuff like that, not just little stuff like, last year when I had a lead for, when my, for insurance, I knocked on the door of someone's house, found out that person had moved, and I was like, okay, sorry to bother you. That person called the police because someone knocked on their door. Please don't call for just trivial stuff. Please, if you see something like drug dealing, fistfights, stuff like that, please call for stuff like that. And please come back to us if you see anything or if we can ever do anything for you, please come back.
Couple of things real quick. Yesterday was National Law Enforcement Day, Appreciation Day. So I'd just like to express my appreciation to the town police. Sorry it's a day late, but appreciate everything you all do to protect our community, along with the Bedford County Sheriff's Department and state police and all our law enforcement agencies. So I just wanted to, to remind everybody of that. Couple of things I would like to, went to the Board of Supervisors meeting last night and I'd like to congratulate Edgar Tuck being named chairman of the Board of Supervisors along with Supervisor Tammy Parker, who represents District Seven, part of the town, as vice chairman. So I look forward to working with them over the next year. And finally, you know, we haven't, I guess we haven't met since the middle of December, so obviously there was a, a extremely cold snap. And people from our law enforcement, the fire department, I know the fire department had thirteen calls one day in, in that extremely cold weather. You know, Public Works was out with some water breaks. Our electric utility was out a whole lot with a lot of power outages and, you know, and extremely cold weather and some really tough working conditions. You know, I'd just like to, once again, express our appreciation to them for the hard work they did over the holidays, you know. It's bad enough, you kind of had to work over the holidays, but it, you know, and really extreme cold and tough conditions that we, we can't say thank you enough about. And please pass that along to, to those department heads and those employees, if you would. That's all I have. So, reported council committees, I don't think we've had any committees. There are two revisions to the agenda. I had two closed sessions at the end. One is pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 223711A1, for the purpose of discussion or consideration of performance or salary of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the town council, specifically the town manager. Just want to talk about our annual review process, a little more on that. And then the second, uh, case, case section pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 223711A4 and A8 for the purpose of receiving legal advice for the protection of privacy of individuals in a personal matter not related to public business. So do we have any motion to add those two closed sessions?
Some, sir.
A second?
Second.
Roll call, I guess, or, yeah, roll call? All in favor? Can we do that by consensus?
We usually do consensus.
Consensus on it?
Just do consensus.
Consensus, all right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so those two are added to the end of the meeting agenda, all right? All right, um, Mr. Warner, consent agenda, if you would start with us.
Certainly, a couple of street closure requests, both from Bedford Boys Tribute Center. First is the Bedford Boys Tribute Center's requesting permission to hold an Operation Bedford Remembers welcoming home parade for soldiers of the 116th Infantry Brigade Combat Team, commemorating their return from their recent one-year deployments to the Horn of Africa. The event will take place Saturday, February 11th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. and would involve closing the following streets. A group staging area which would include Bedford Avenue and Fourth Street, including Liberty Station Restaurant Parking Lot. And this would also require street closures on Fourth Street and Depot and Mason Streets. The parade will proceed east on Bedford Avenue to North Bridge Street, turn south, continue on North Bridge Street to the corner of East Main Street, turn east, continue on East Main Street, and the parade would end at South Street in front of the Bedford County Courthouse. The end of the parade, street closures will necessitate East Main Street also to be closed at Odie Street for parking of school buses to transport soldiers to the Orbury. Bedford Boys Tribute Center will notify the Fire Department, Police Department, and Bedford County Fire and Rescue of the street closings. The residents in the affected areas will also be notified and will have ingress and egress to their homes. Town Council has requested to approve the closing of the above streets for the Operation Bedford Remembers Parade, starting at 10:00 a.m. on February 11th. I will note that they have attached the normal application forms. However, I don't think the fee has been paid, and I think that implies that they are requesting a waiver of the fee.
So we have a motion, uh, on the request to close the streets for the Bedford Boys Tribute Center, Operations Bedford Remembers.
Some, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, just got it.
So do we need to make a motion about waiving the fee or is that included into the motion?
You tell me, you made the motion.
I say Bart can do that.
Is it, I mean...
They're supposed to have a parade through town.
Right, but I mean, it's, do we need to do that or is that...
The policy allows Bart to make this, I believe. I believe the policy allows...
Well, with our facilities use policy for street closures, we have deferred that to council, and there is a, is a fee, and that is...
So we can't tell you, you're under the bus on that?
Sure, you can, you can come in on the bus anytime. And I will say, the fee, the fee itself, I don't have strong feelings about because it doesn't really capture our costs at all.
I don't know about that. You raised an eyebrow at the Fourth Street when you were reading it.
Yeah, just Mason Street, I just...
Do, do we know that how long?
I think it's Macon Street.
It's Macon. Do we know that and how long it'll be and how...
Fourth Street is just a one-way street.
I wish Ken were here to tell you, he's expecting it to be big.
He says, I don't want to, oh, one time to get everything, but I want my half at the most.
Fourth Street and Depot and Macon.
It's Macon, that's where, obviously.
No, this goes under the hundred pass, and then it goes up the alley. That's Fourth Street coming down from the stoplight. Right?
Yes, but I think we can handle it.
We can, I'm unsure.
10:00 a.m., I will tell you, you know, we have a typical parade route, which we're all, we all know what it is. I'll try to describe it, but anything outside of that, we tried once moving the 5K at Beals, and that was a disaster for traffic. I think for an hour on a Saturday morning, we're probably okay. There'll be some snarls because this is something different, but I don't think we'll hang up the truck traffic quite as much as we did that one time when the 5K changed.
And the parade ends at the courthouse up here, so they don't go around the whole, you know, parade.
I think the Saturday makes the world of difference.
But the, the street, it'll be closed in front of the courthouse too for their program, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
That, that part of the parade route troubles me less than anything that's kind of around Bedford Avenue and affects Depot Street because that's a, a de facto truck route. And that's where we had the snarl before. But if the parade starts at 10 and moves through that area within about 30 minutes, we're probably okay. And Chief Lewis can smack me cross-eyed if I'm saying anything incorrect.
Did we roll a parade, Johnny, like, you know?
Yeah, but not along the usual parade route.
Right, no, it, yeah.
Which is why this is different.
And you, I mean, you're, so what's everybody selling on the hundred dollars? I mean, you know, we're taking the president, I mean, we're, we're taking the tag that we're not going to waive it, but, you know, for anybody and other times, the people stepped up and said, well, I'll pay it for them. I, I don't know.
I think with the troops and stuff like, you know, Ken's put a, a great program together, what I've talked to Ken about. He's going to have a major general here if I'm not mistaken, so, I mean, I mean...
Hundred dollars ain't going to make a break or something. I mean, I've already made a hundred dollar decision for too long, so, I mean, I'm okay waiving it myself.
You know, it's a military thing, I think we need to support and honor the military, so we'll sign with it.
This is not a one, I mean, it's kind of a, you know, because they're coming back from deployments, so, I mean, I'm okay.
We need to add that to the motion, add it to, and add the waiver fee to it.
Well, the fee's not in, the fee's not in there, it hasn't been paid right now anyway, so the motion, uh...
We just won't go like that.
Yeah, Bart is waiting to see.
That's it.
Is that all right? We got a motion, we got a second? Roll call?
Mr. Carson?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hartwig?
Aye.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mr. Showin?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven rise.
Okay, and the next one is for an event that is scheduled to take place on June 6, 2023. Bedford Boys Tribute Center is requesting permission to hold a... Bedford Boys Tribute Center is requesting permission to hold a wreath laying ceremony in front of the county courthouse, and they're requesting a street closure request in conjunction with this for Tuesday, June sixth, at four p.m. to eight p.m., to allow sit-up and tear-down of tents and chairs on East Main Street. This will be a Tuesday, and I think, I think Mr. Parker actually talked about this in a previous appearance before council. Basically, we're just talking about the one block of East Main Street from North Bridge Street eastward to South Street. Again, they will notify the fire department, police department, and county fire and rescue, and also residents of the affected streets. Tonight, town council is requested to approve the closing of this, of the above streets, for the wreath laying ceremony from four p.m. to eight p.m. on June sixth. Also, I will note that no fee has been submitted, so as part of the motion, we would be waiving the fee.
That was, do we have a motion?
Some may.
Second.
Second, discussion.
Yes, on Tuesday.
Yeah, that was a little more problematic, when it's on the Tuesday.
At four, at four o'clock.
At four o'clock.
I only blocked that little part of the street.
Yes, it's gonna be...
Both sides of the street?
Yes.
Could they not be combined?
Well, I think you have the authority to...
So, last year...
Approve what parameters you're comfortable with.
Last year was half of the street.
No, it wasn't anything.
Last year there was not a street closure, and that didn't work very well.
Because traffic was driving back and forth, and then we had, officers showed up and did shut it down, but, yeah.
What happened?
Right, chief?
Yes, sir, so what happened was, when I showed up, people, part of the one by, so the officers blocked it for a short time, it was a thirty-minute span, while they run the bell. But that, that surprised to us that we did that place, that we did block for that period.
I mean, four hours is a long...
Yeah, it might have been what on was going on, it's four hours.
I mean, it was like a thirty-minute ceremony. So, let's see, I mean, I...
Is half a street enough, do you think?
We can't, no, because...
You'd still need someone to do traffic, come and go. Let people come and go.
We had so many citizens that were just going back and forth across the...
No, and a lot of the citizens were, because it was, it was pretty warm out, even, and they were over there next to the administration building, on the sidewalk, in the shade. So, I mean, you gotta close it, but I just don't see, I don't see the need for four hours.
So, did he mention anything to y'all about putting a tent up? Did he mention that to you, Bart? He stopped by, putting a, he's gonna be standing up, that pretty much have to put it up and close the whole street.
I mean, it's in the application, yeah.
Yeah. That's what he mentioned.
A tent in the street?
A tent in the street.
I think the biggest thing is the set-up and take-down of the tent and chairs.
That's what the whole point is, 'cause he said last year, this is what he said. He said that because there were several people that didn't use that tent.
Somebody passed out?
Somebody passed out, Rescue Squad got called, if I recall correctly. And because it was so hot, he wanted to put a big tent up in the street to cover all the families, the citizens, the people that's come to see the event, the seven and the seven.
So, he wanted to do military...
Yeah, wanted a big military tent.
All the way down.
That's what he said. I would, I would...
Might take the, by the time you, you have to take a bath.
What time's the ceremony, it's like, what time is it?
I think it's five, was it, gee, five forty-five, or something like that?
I think Ken can be, again, I wish he were here to speak to this directly, but I think he can be fairly flexible on the ceremony itself.
I wouldn't say that, do you?
No, I think because the ringing of the bells happens six, was it six forty-four, or is it...
Six forty-four, that's out here, yeah.
So, six forty-four, so the ceremony kind of started at like six, I think, and then it ended with the ringing of the bells at six forty-four. Coincides with D-Day, so...
That's probably five.
So, let's, let's talk to him about five to, five to seven, maybe, or five. I mean, you gotta let, people gotta get out of downtown that are working down there, you know. Is the only thing, from the courthouse and...
Because it is some people that does park behind, behind social services there, so they...
It's not the ceremony that's gonna take up all their time, it's the tent that's gonna take up a lot of...
Well, they may have to go with pop-up tent, I mean, the tailgate tent.
They put one of the big, it's gonna take some time to put that thing up.
Well, could he put, I wonder if he can put that in the courthouse, the plaza area right there at courthouse?
I mean, I'm all for it, but I think we have to allow businesses and all that to, then we get out, so I'd say five p.m.
Five to seven thirty at the max, or something like that.
So, the next question, we want to close the whole street, or is it half the street?
No, we gotta close the whole street, we gotta close that, that block from Court Street to Duke Street, right?
Is the main problem getting the vehicles out, or rerouting the traffic?
It's gonna be a problem, well, getting bigger is gonna be a problem, we're gonna have to like, tell people not to park there that day, or go somewhere else, and then just detouring the traffic to the right spaces, and then I have to tell the tractor to route traffic, because once they get one piece, it might be tough to...
Yeah, that's true.
To maneuver. We'd have to set some routes up, and for we can make that happen.
Talk to him about it a little bit, come back at it, you got till June?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, 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 it's, can you do that, Bart, just to praise him about our concerns, and say there's, I mean, the time, the time and taking up...
Yeah, because I would feel more comfortable if we could at least get some questions answered about this particular motion before we vote on it. And as far as the hundred dollars, we already waived it for one event, but this being in the middle of the week, you know, obviously, you're getting the police help into close down the streets, Public Works is gonna need to help out a little bit, they're not gonna work for free. And, you know, a hundred bucks isn't much, and if need be, you know, I'm sure somebody will say, hey, you know what, we'll pay the fee for you, just like someone came to us a couple of years ago, wanted us to waive the hundred-dollar fee for the tree line ceremony, I believe. And, you know, we said, hey, members of council were even willing to say, hey, we're willing to put money towards it, pay the fee for you. I mean, that's always an option as well, I mean, but like I said, I think we still need to find out some questions, get some questions answered, such as how long's it really gonna take to set up, is four hours really necessary? How can we have it set up at a certain time where it's not gonna be traffic during rush hour? I mean, those are things that we all need to consider before we can even vote. As far as I'm concerned right now, I don't have enough information to make a decision one way or the other, other than to say, maybe we should table it.
Actually, we just withdraw the, drop, withdraw the motion, just, that's the best way to handle it.
Just withdraw the motion.
I don't know that there actually was a motion on the floor, but even if there was, you can go ahead and withdraw that, and simply defer this to the next meeting, once you've had a chance for Bart to talk to you, or even have him come and talk to you.
That's, I'll probably invite him to come to the meeting, that's part of it.
And Robert, second, so I withdraw my motion on this matter until further discussion with Mr. Parker. I thank Robert. Yep.
Alright, okay. So, we're good on that matter. Next item, new business, appointment of Todd Stone as the fire chief.
Yes, but Todd Stone has been re-elected by the fire company, well, recommended to be re-elected by the fire company for a full one-year term as chief. The town code says technically he is appointed by this body in conjunction with that process, so my recommendation would be that you ratify the choice of the fire company.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we make Mr. Todd Stone Fire Chief of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Like, roll call?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick?
Aye.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mr. Showen?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Carson?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
Okay. Alright, next is the two closed session items, and like I said, we'll, we'll get a motion on both of them, and so I'll read them again. Pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section two point two, three seven one one A1, for the purpose of discussion or consideration of performance or salary of specific public officers, appointees, or employees in the town council, specifically the town manager. As I said, that's just to talk about the annual review process a little more. And then the pursuant, and then pursuant to Virginia Code, Sections two point two, that's three seven one one A4 and A8, for the purpose of receiving legal advice, and for the protection of privacy of individuals in a personal matter not related to public business.
Some may.
We have a motion. Second, roll call?
A second.
Alright, so, roll call?
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mr. Showen?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Carson? Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion.
... hereby certifies that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the council.
So.
Second.
All right, we got a motion to second. Um, roll call.
Mr. Showen.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Carson. Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick.
Aye.
Mr. Johannesen.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
All right, so we are, how about, if I say this right. Adjourned to January 23rd, 21st.
21st.
At 9:00 a.m. for our Town Council strategic planning work session in Town Council Hall.
Breakfast served.
So, yeah, I think, I hope they'll serve breakfast. Lunch and maybe dinner.
9:00 a.m. You're right, I can deal with it.